Are there any agenda additions or beliefs? Uh, approved the minutes, regular meeting at Denver twenty second.
Mr. Chairman of the Board of Representatives.
Both of them.
I would second that by golly.
Are there any, uh, comments in this press? Uh, with all the favor in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And my folks. Um, highway, both permission to report.
I just had update, we have the road crew been feeling a little bit of mud problems south lately. Which is about the first time this winter. I would rather bring up these things, step it up best again. When the weather came through, so they're asking. I've been around. For the town. I rose, I thought. After last weekend, more. They really couldn't help, no. So, might have some, like today, we're filling in some spots that were solid. Um, the other thing I want to bring up is the quarter line report. Um, I feel the residents and Swenson Town meeting, or, uh, Rutland Town, their meeting. Um, and still support members. And what come out of that was Rutland Town is actually working on trying to keep things going up there with the plowing and and the grading and whatnot, and maintenance of that road. Um, Mr. Sears made a comment that he is actually sending two of his, I guess two of his employees to training for greater work. And they're gonna run it greater, to maintain that road. I saw, I don't know, bail bump had something there, Mike.
Yeah, I think pretty much.
George.
Seems like, uh, that was the, uh, gist of it. Uh, I'm just, you know, let's hope that they could do what they say they're gonna do.
Mm-hmm.
So, I can say. I noticed that the, uh, pothole valley there at the end is getting pretty deep. I don't know if you guys have.
As a citizen on the road, in the town. Um. The Clarendon roads are great. Um, Quarter Line Road is wonderful to our town line. Um, Rutland Town has a marsh. And that makes it difficult and with springtime, winter, spring, winter, spring, winter, spring. It is what it is. I would hope that they'll be able to learn how to care for the road and take care of it. However, if not, I'd still like to have, in the future, the ability to communicate with Rutland Town in a manner that is respectful on both sides and that can work with collaboration. Because the road, it is secure, it, it's, it's security and health reasons and being passable. And if we can work collaboratively and if we can give a service, be paid for it, why not? Um, especially when we're talking about a half mile or a one mile section. I just hope going forward, um, we can work with them so we can get to a better road surface. And I know it's on Rutland Town, but again, if we're there, we've got the equipment, we can just go down and back. It seems pretty simple. And I hope in the future we can work it out, if need be.
I had just had a thought, like, that they are gonna be working on that section. They need to up the game.
It's a thoroughfare. It's a thoroughfare. It's like Creek Road, it's like Metal Road.
We, we, we put the ball in their court.
Yeah.
Said, alright, be a smack of whatever. And that was feedback. Was it a price or, um, revenue per back per hour or anything like that or maintenance rates like that? Their feedback was, we're gonna maintain the road. And how they do it, that's up to them.
To be seen.
And I.
I would just hope that we can advocate for those of us who use that road.
And they're, they, they've already, you know, they talked to Reggie at Windmill Park about the rent of the grader.
Yeah.
And they called Reggie up three weeks prior of saying, okay, we're gonna need her. Reggie will help schedule grader and stuff like that.
Well, thank you.
It sounded to me like they were pretty proactive now because they've got enough knocking on doors, uh, so.
And we're coming into this season.
Yeah.
The worst stuff. I'll just keep feeding them more brownies.
There you are.
Whatever it takes.
Coffee cake.
They, they were just straight brownies.
The next thing I have, the next thing I have my list is the part time, uh, road crew. We had an interview, both of you done having an interview with Calum. Mike, Flashman.
You still have.
Really qualified.
Okay.
So, and then.
We've got a few more in the stack, right, that we might be interviewing or?
Well.
I can look that over.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, it's internal at this point because we don't have any announcement.
Right.
You're gonna be making a recommendation potentially for some interviews in executive session if we go that way.
We see somebody that's qualified enough, move on, definitely, definitely.
The posting is still up at this point, right? Okay.
Find in. I don't wanna say this or anything, but, you know, if it's Applebee's.
Yeah.
Restaurant people and stuff like that, and local operators or.
Do you have those same copies?
That's why I was gonna look at names, I got a list of them. Yep, yep, yep.
Alright, then we'll return that back to.
Um, next thing on the list is Highway Department radios. Steve, the salesperson, guy come down, um, we equated a conversation with him on the two-way radios. We are very impressed with them of how they, it's like us speaking right here in the room.
So, you've had the trial period like we authorized before.
We put three radios for us in the trucks.
Okay.
And it's unbelievable, we can talk all the way to South Wallingford, down to the corner.
Really?
And just like I'm talking now. From one side of town to another. Um, actually, at the Rutland Town meeting.
Yep.
One of the select board members rode with me. And one of the guys got on the radio and we were over there. What, what happens is we got Grandfathers Knob, we got Pyco, and you got Mill Equinox.
So, repeating, yeah.
Yep, and when I go to the pit, South Wallingford, I hear a beep right way down through there, that's changing too.
Oh, really?
Manchester.
It's jumping the other repeater.
He said, we're actually in a decent area to reach out the, the three towers that we beat out from.
Now, going up Walker Mountain, up the mountain.
Don't seem to have problem.
That's pretty good.
That we found, yeah.
Well, you should have Pyco from there.
Yep, 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 that's fair. Um, you can buy them and they're, they're about a hundred bucks a piece. And.
But then you're still gonna pay for the service, right?
Yeah, and then you gotta, um, put in a, oh, blank right now, transmit repeater on top of that. So, my suggestion is, is to rent them. They're fully covered, if anything happens to them, except for if we break an antenna off of the, you know.
Sure.
A limb or something, or if they get stolen or ran over or something like that.
If it's our fault.
It's our fault.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, what we're looking at is there are eight radios, um, and one of those radios, we will rotate like to more tractor.
So, okay.
Cause that is only used seasonal.
Yeah.
We can actually pull it out, either the excavator or the grader for that timeframe day or.
Put it where you need it.
Where you need it, that lemonade one. And with that being said, what we'd do is when, if we go over this program, when they set the radios up, we'll actually put a plate and each piece of equipment and an antenna, so all you could do is set it, plug it in, and we're ready to go.
So, what's the advantage of running it for supply?
You own them, if something happens, you're fully responsible for the parents. Right, while they're short one. Um, the install was.
According to this, they're fourteen hundred bucks a piece.
If you own it.
And what they say for all of it.
Retail va- retail value of each radio is fourteen hundred bucks.
Twenty-nine per radio.
Per month.
Per month.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at it by your term, yeah, it'd be cheaper to rent something, but look at, look at our own, be, you know, real about this. Look at our own house, TVs. The one you buy today is already obsolete.
Right.
And then five years from now, I won't be working.
No, I'm just asking, because you guys ran through all these prices a couple of weeks ago and.
Yeah.
I don't commit numbers like that to my mind, so.
Well, I think the initial, uh, period of time, the renting certainly will show us what they're capable of and what the costs are gonna be as we move along, and sometime we may wanna come back to the conversation, but.
Rental agreement is for two years.
Two-year rental agreement.
Yeah, so there we are, we got a two-year trial period.
My only issue is, it wasn't brought up at budget time. It's obviously not in la- this year's budget, it's not in next year's budget. Was asked the treasurer if there's money available for it.
And then build it into the next budget next fall.
Yeah, we're looking at.
Hundred and twenty thousand is also for a truck that they're looking at and the, the traffic lights?
No, it's separate from the truck, right? That's not the equipment fund.
Right, that's not.
That's just the fund balance.
Okay.
That's just.
This is a highway fund balance, before we put an article on the ballot saying that if there's any funds left over from the highway fund that at the end of the fiscal year they get transported to the equipment fund, before we put that article on the ballot, there was money left over that then went into a highway fund balance.
Gotcha.
Um, since we put that article on the ballot, we haven't had that happen again, of course, um, but.
So, there's a hundred and twenty there, and we're talking about roughly fourteen, well, it's whatever we land on for the for the, for the lights.
We're, we're gonna discuss that after.
Yeah, this says eighteen nine fifty or twenty-three fifty.
You, that was, um, if you wanna skip to that a little bit, just from this conversation.
I was gonna say, it all kind of ties together. We gotta determine how much money we got, so.
Um, the total light system with everything is twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which we could actually take out that, um, countdown and add that remote control, so that bring it down to eighteen thousand.
All the seconds for when it changes color is that countdown, is right, yeah.
Oh, it tells you how long before the light changes?
Elim- eliminate that, uh, remote control is, we felt was gonna be more official for, beneficial for us because if you're down around a corner or something, you can actually push a little keypad thing, stop the traffic, everything goes red.
Okay. So, remotely you push it and it stops all the traffic if you're coming in to back in, if you're doing something.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think that would be much more advantageous, no question.
So. I'm just doing some math.
So, you wanna motion on this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Trying to forget things though, please.
But I'm just doing some math, just to.
The, um, back to the radios, the initial install is ninety-nine dollars a piece. And if we have seven radios, it's roughly seven hundred dollars for the initial install.
So, over two years, you're gonna spend, without the install, you're gonna spend about six. And then, so twenty, you're gonna use about a quarter, not even a quarter, what's in the fund balance. That still leaves us a healthy, relatively healthy reserve in there if, if we get like a super bad winter that we need to dip into it for salt or something. I mean, it's still, still gonna have a decent reserve sitting there.
So, do you wanna take it in one motion or two motions, Mr. Chair?
I, we'll do it one motion.
I move that we move ahead with the purchase of the radios or the road crew.
Do a second, do a small.
Well, but you gotta determine how you're doing it, are you purchasing or are you leasing?
Oh, I'm sorry, renting.
Okay.
Three-year lease.
Leasing, yeah. Thank you, Robert.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Uh, there's something I wanted to add to that, that they can actually be installed within.
Soon.
Within two, minimum two weeks, probably a middle week.
Okay.
And if we get, if we purchased, probably next fall because I guess that repeater up there, everybody's back to buy it.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, the motion, uh, on the table, so to speak, uh, any further discussion? Any man in favor of motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, uh, purchase the, uh, lights, construction, uh, lights for, with, without the countdown and include the remote control. I think I covered it all.
Eighteen hundred, nine hundred.
Eighteen hundred, nine fifty.
Eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
Right.
Yep.
Did, did we push back at all on the delivery charge, just curious? I mean, we're spending a lot of money to get hit with a delivery charge of almost a thousand dollars.
I doubt it, right, it's coming out of Canada.
Oh, it says Barry, nonetheless.
Yeah, the manufacturer's in Canada.
Okay.
They're probably direct ship.
Okay.
Not, not something you can do UPS.
No, I know that, yeah. Probably freighting them.
Alright, just motion, maybe? Do you have a second?
I thought there was, but if not, I'll second it.
Yeah, I couldn't come through, there is a second. Any further discussion? So, any man in favor of motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose?
Ashley, would you like this going on the EWP?
Sure, so the EWP grant sign-off is just changing the name of Katie to myself, um, on the application. So, that's, that one.
So moved. So, I guess.
Uh, in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Alright, and.
Brick.
Yeah, took you a little bit there. This year's. No, no, I'll get to that. Application for federal assistance, so.
Then you gotta sign that.
Yeah, okay. I don't know if I have to sign in this box or something, just. Here in the gray box. Alright, uh. The brick location match, you wanna speak for that?
So, we received an email from the shared mitigation grants manager, Lisa, um, suggesting that we review the budget that we had originally, um, and presume for inflation of twenty-twenty-five pricing. Uh, we did reach out before Katie left, um, requesting, you know, if she had some sort of an idea of what percentage to add to that. Um, you know, she came back with kind of Google what inflation prices would be. So, we went with anywhere, we saw anywhere from, I think it was seven to ten percent. So, we added ten percent to be, you know, just to err on the side of caution. And she did say that there are no overruns in brick, so, um, it's, you have, there is last year's and then what she is suggesting us to go up to. Because work will not be done until twenty-twenty-five.
So, in other words, um, with that ten percent consideration, it's gonna be fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred as opposed to fifty-two, five hundred, which is right now.
And it's, uh, we have a twenty-five percent match on it.
Yes.
So, ours goes from thirteen to fourteen and change.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the adjustments considering.
I'll second that.
Inflation's gonna get any less, so.
Do a second, do it.
Yep.
And I have to sign this, if, could you include that in the motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll include in my motion for the board chairman to sign it.
Second as well.
Are you doing any further discussion? Any man in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
We got pay orders and stuff around, but.
Yeah, Art's got them on.
Working on them, working on them.
Yeah.
Um. Gotta make sure Heidi's on the up and up.
Um, approval of, uh, select board marks?
They're coming George's way in a second. There's one.
You signed some of it, George said.
Yeah, I did get some of them already, no.
Meanwhile, Des, anybody wanna, you know, talk? Yes, yeah.
First, as a community member, I'd like to welcome Ashley as our new administrative assistant. But I also want to note how well I brought Katie up, no, right, go ahead.
Yeah.
She did a great job, and I just wanted to make note of that.
You get these cards.
Thank you.
Also, I had a couple of questions, and now the time to ask.
Yeah, I thought I heard.
Are, how, are we still doing the survey on the voting day?
I have, I was gonna report on that.
You are, okay.
We're gonna do it now. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I sent out a letter to the other three towns in our district and, uh, the board members saw a copy of it simply stated what we had discussed and that, uh, I invited them to, uh, see if they would like to join us in that effort. I had a reply from, uh, Wallingford, and you may have heard Phil mention that he saw me on TV because I was at the Wallingford Select Board meeting last Monday. And I shared with him, uh, the discussion that took place here on a cou- couple of different occasions about the topic. And then we had a brief discussion on how it all would work and sort of had an agreement between myself and that board that what we might wanna do is number one, it's too late to do it before our, our March, uh, election. So, we might wanna think about doing it in November. And we oughta have the questionnaire be constructed by member from each town and maybe somebody from the school board or superintendent or some such thing as that, uh, which seemed like a reasonable suggestion. I haven't heard from, uh, Timoth or from, uh, Shrewsbury as yet, so I'm gonna reach out to them if I don't care from them in a day or so. And that's where we are at this point, and at some point, I suspect that Shrewsbury and Timoth are gonna be a bit hesitant because if we're talking about consolidation, they will probably wonder, are they talking about us? I don't know, so that's where we're at at the moment.
So, what is the school, what is the school board's opinion of this whole thing?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What is the school board's opinion of this?
I sent a, uh, email to the, uh, chair of the school board and I forget her name right now, um.
Andrea Hawkins?
Andrea, thank you. And she replied that she was interested and to keep her, um, informed of, of what progress was made and what could be done. So, I would guess that they must, the whole board should know at this point, I would guess, from her. So, that's where we are.
So, Wallingford was favorable to it then?
Yeah, I would think they were, were favorable from the overall conversation.
Okay.
They weren't ready to say, yes, let's do it immediately, if you see what I mean.
Sure.
They're hesitant, wanna make sure they understand and.
Which is gonna be an ongoing.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen overnight, I'm sure of it.
Well, thank you, George, for keeping the conversation going.
Oh, I will. Oops, I gotta sign this. Did I answer your question? Okay.
I have another question, assist the time now, or?
Yeah.
Okay, um, concerning the covered bridge, um, has the board thought at all about the gorge road? About whether or not to keep the gorge road closed after the bridge is open? Catch. I mean, to me, that would be a great thing, just personally, I know. One last word.
Maybe I shouldn't say nothing, but head up a committee for walking, jogging, skiing. And bring, bring, we put this up for it and we'll see what the state has to say.
Gonna say, what is the state gonna say about that?
I don't know. And the other thing is, has to be opened up somewhat because of the airport.
Well, that's what my husband and I were talking about that, but it's not, isn't, it's not open now, though, to the airport access, is it?
Yes, and actually, they've been following themselves to the runway from the airport roadside, yes.
I, I hadn't been on that one, so. So, it has to be legally open to that.
And we have, we put barriers over there, the barriers are just far enough apart so a fire truck or emergency vehicles can get through.
Right.
With portable signs that are supposed to be put in the center, that they, somebody can.
I just know when the road finally reopens, it's gonna be, it's gonna need some work because it's been closed for so long, so.
Actually, we, we've been over, I was over last week.
I was over there yesterday.
And it didn't seem to be too bad. We had, the biggest problem was the brush and everything adhered right in, overgrowth coming in. So, we went up there, actually mowed it.
I was up, I was actually, I'm on it yesterday. I moved the sign, so the sign up by the bridge, we moved to the side because they were parking some of the heavy equipment. Uh, so I drove down, again, the road looks as, rather, as good as I've ever seen it, actually.
Amazing with the, you know, traffic on.
Exactly, no, that's open.
Potholes, no ruts or anything. Yeah.
So, the chances of it being closed permanently except for the airport, not too high, I am assuming, right?
Well, there's some people that think, like you're thinking, a beautiful place to go walk and stuff. And then there's some people who like, thought to, they're right in this room, he said, when the hell are we gonna open it? Because they're getting sick and tired of them taking the loop.
Coming up from Wallingford.
More crap than public grid. Because some people will use that public grid, East Street and then Bunk Road.
They, oh, God, no, all right. We don't want that.
Yeah. You gotta be open-minded about that. And look at the whole, the whole scenario.
Any other public comments? I, I, that's all we have. Yes. Any other public comments? I've moved business. Chris, do you have anything for us? All right. Heidi, you have a, you report first. Okay. Kevin?
Uh, as we've reported, Rob- Robert's not here tonight, as we've recorded the last couple of meetings, we've triggered the parameters for reappraisal of the town just like, well, a year ago, June first, it was a hundred and sixty-five towns in the state. How many now are probably more than that? So we reached out to property evaluation review and, uh, one of the things I call a statistical review and they do not probably allow because it'll be five years, uh, since our last appraisal, which was in twenty-nineteen. Uh, that is talking to Chris Wright. Talking with, it clod, it clod felt it, uh, NIMRIC. He's willing to, uh, give us a bid, but it won't be so, uh, grand with twenty-twenty-eight. Grand list, which is gonna get four years old.
I just thought he was gonna retire.
Well, probably retired, maybe he'll retire before that, but he's, uh, he inquired, especially with him, he asked if he, if we would want a bid. So Bob and I discussed it, well, we'll come ask you folks. Be, you know, a non-binding bid, but give us an idea exactly how much it may be, you know, costing the town for now. Appraisal, the last one was twenty-seventeen, seven twenty seventeen with the twenty-nineteen. I believe we touched with Heidi with a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for that reappraisal. It, you know, I got it.
Yeah.
Hundred and twelve thousand. So like everything else, everything else has probably gone up. There are, uh, there'd be other people we can reach out to, uh, who use NIMRIC. So that's why we figured we'd start with NIMRIC. We use NIMRIC in twenty-nineteen. So just sort of direction, is it something you want us to entertain, reach out there and say, please give us a bid. Kind of give us an idea exactly how much it's gonna cost us. Uh, I think Heidi mentioned we have eighty-seven thousand in the budget for, you know, for the appraisal fund. Uh, of course, that goes up every year, so.
Five more years in it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, when they did the last reappraisal, I was able to go out with the, some of the appraisers, uh, on, on site and was impressed at how thorough they were. And the other thing that I was impressed at is that they, um, advertised that they would be, have certain hours and people could come in that were concerned about the values that they received on their property. And they would meet with these folks and chat with them and generally, except for I think two cases, it was resolved without having to go any further, which was certainly a big plus in my mind. And the two that weren't resolved, nobody was surprised at, so, uh, I think it was well done and worth their, uh, being considered again.
Make a motion to authorize the listers to seek a bid from NIMRIC.
Second in discussion.
I'll second it, but I think you need to have a couple other bids too.
Well, certainly, but.
Yeah. But, I mean, you were looking for direction. I definitely wanna see NIMRIC in the mix.
When we get our letter, my understanding is, you can get the letter for property going from the state. They list a number of people for this. And so we could then reach out to, uh, well, my understanding in twenty-seventeen, NIMRIC was, uh, the choice taken though they went the lowest bid.
Correct.
They were the choice taken. And for the first ten months to the year after the reappraisal, the sales and everything, the value sales, you know, within one percent or so of the, of the grand list.
Yeah.
The world went crazy.
They were good.
They were very good. Yeah.
All right, there's motion made, seconded.
And, and, and if, if, uh.
Authorizing.
Yeah, and if you prefer to me to reword it, I, I would just like to see NIMRIC in the mix. Yes.
Right.
Authorize you to seek bids, but I would really like to see NIMRIC definitely in the bid pile, so to speak.
Would you say that? Do you agree with this up there?
Yeah, yeah, I'll second that. Sounds good.
Uh, so.
I like NIMRIC. They were good.
Motion made, seconded. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Or you oppose? Um, Gloria, do you have anything, down for?
Yes, Ashley, our next, um, election. And so, we're in, on ballot, we begin five months. Ballot, making call, elected mail goes out, um, or we're open on election day, ten to seven, and you can come in and vote.
We're gonna post that around town.
Yeah. And you could come in any time, uh, before that and just vote in the office. So there's, there's a lot of options.
If you have any questions.
Informational meetings at the Grange Hall, Gloria?
Yes. Monday night, four.
Okay.
Six, yeah.
You're doing six, okay.
Yes, you have any?
Unless another cow gets loose, then we might be late.
So I'm sorry, the informational meeting is before, Monday night, before elections.
And that's at the Grange?
Yes, at six o'clock.
At six?
All right, you asked, you're good, right?
Yeah.
Um, Clark, do you have any concerns?
I do not.
Stop.
Do not.
George?
Well, let's see. I think I got four or five hours of work. All pass.
I wanna welcome Ashley as our new select board assistant. And again, thank you for the catering now for all she did.
Absolutely.
It was, definitely.
I agree, hundred percent. Um, so moved. All right. Second to the motion.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose?